Thank you. Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome on this snowy day to our pre-budget council, special pre-budget council meeting. We have with us this morning, I don't see any members of the public on Zoom, that we do have all of our councillors, with the exception of councillor Nash, who said he was going to be late. And I'll just go down the list here. We have, I'm Mayor George Comrie. We have our deputy clerk, Wendy Schroeder.
Some background from you. Sorry.
We have councillor Jill Lam, we have councillor Chad Spray, councillor Woods, fire chief Bob Whitman, planning assistant Paul McRee, our public works manager, Mike Huggins, and our treasurer Jessica Sankowski, and last but not least, our CEO clerk Nigel Lack. So that's who's on the call at the moment. I will call the meeting to order and we'll start with our national anthem and Indigenous land acknowledgement statement. Well, we got the video for that.
Sorry about that. I was wondering.
Saying long to the words, right? So, all right. The municipality of Whitestone recognizes all of Canada resides on traditional unceded and/or treaty lands of the Indigenous people of Turtle Island. We recognize our municipality on the Robinson Huron Treaty territory is home to many past, present, and future Indigenous families. This acknowledgement of the land is a declaration of our commitment and collective responsibility to reconcile the past and to honor and value the culture, history, and relationships we have with one another. I will ask now if there is any, if anyone has a pecuniary interest to declare in today's proceedings. And I hear none, and I wouldn't expect one because, in fact, we're not likely going to be taking any votes other than to receive the report. We may do some straw polls if people want them, but the purpose of today's meeting is to allow staff to present some background information on the budget and to give councillors an opportunity to respond, ask questions, make comments, and provide some input into the the draft budget that will be prepared for us for a future meeting and early in the new year. So, anyway, that's the plan for today, as I understand it. Could we get to start with, could I get a motion to approve the agenda as circulated, please?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, councillor Lam.
A second, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Woods. Any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor, could I get a a hand up or if you've got video on, a hand up or say yes, please?
Councillor Woods, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have an agenda then. Thank you. Because, as I said earlier, there aren't really any substantive motions. We need a motion to move into committee of the whole so that we can have a discussion. Without a motion on the floor, could I get a mover and seconder for that, please?
I'll move.
Twelve seconds.
Thank you, councillor Woods and councillor Bray. That the council of the municipality of Whitestone move into committee of the whole at, it looks like 10:09. And all those in favor?
Councillor Woods, yes.
Thank you very much. That's carried. And
Sorry, I do have councillor Nash joining us right now. I'm admitting, just so you know before you go on.
All right, thank you. I'll wait till I see his number come up. Maybe it is.
I have added him now and added, put his name in.
Okay.
Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor? I am here.
Yes, I was gonna, yes, I was just waiting to see if you would come live here. Thank you, welcome. So far, we have approved the agenda and have moved into committee of the whole. So at this point, what I would like to do then is to call on our staff and I'm assuming that Jessica is going to do this, but to just introduce the report that you have for us and maybe you can cover off in addition what kind of input you're looking for us for from us today.
Thank you, Mayor Comrie. Through you, your worship. Before we started the discussions, I just wanted to provide an update on our 2024 financial statements and our 2024 year-end surplus. So we are currently just finalizing things with our auditor. That number is still being finalized and is subject to some year-end adjustments. We also need to review the proper allocation of restricted funds, capital-related variances, and legislated reserve contributions. So until that number is finalized, I'm not comfortable providing that to council at this meeting, but the plan is to present that at the December meeting.
Jessica, in all fairness, I mean, again, we're not going to hold you to it, but I mean, what happened, like, we had a budget last year and there was a projected surplus, I thought at the time of $100,000. In talking to you yesterday, you thought it would be north of that. I mean, we don't hold you to it, but I mean, if we're to comment on some things, you know, it'd be nice to know we've got 100 or 200. Where is that surplus from last year in terms of our books? Is it in there at all?
The surplus reported in the draft budget that was prepared by the interim treasurer was 240,000, and I think that's the number that council's had in mind. However, that's not entirely unrestricted. As I mentioned, some of it relates to capital. So, you know, if we underspend in capital and it was to be funded through reserves, that doesn't mean that money's freed up to apply to offset the levy increase. And some of the surplus has to be transferred to either deferred revenue in the case of CCBF or OSIF, or to a separate reserve, like in the case of the building department. So in terms of an unrestricted surplus that you could move to a contingency reserve or a tax stabilization reserve, the number's probably around $70,000 to $80,000.
Okay. Well, that's good to know, and that will be firmed up by the next meeting, I take it, eh?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem. Okay, so just to continue on, the purpose of today's meeting, Nigel had received feedback from council that they wanted an opportunity to be able to provide input into the budget prior to staff preparing it and presenting a draft to council. So, report Fin 2025-14 was prepared and it outlines some of the major pressures, constraints, and positive factors that staff are looking into and incorporating into the 2026 budget for council's information. Further to that, the input that we are asking from council is in four specific areas. That is service levels. So whether you want to maintain, reduce, or enhance our current services, what capital priorities you have, if there's any new initiatives you have, or if there's any of our existing assets that you want us to investigate for inclusion based on prioritization against the asset management plan, any reserve strategies that you'd like us to look into, whether that's maintaining, increasing, reducing the contributions to reserves, or funding any specific initiatives with some of our reserves, and the overall expectations for the 2026 tax levy. So, you know, maybe a range of a tax increase that council would like staff to stay within. So, once we get that feedback, staff will prepare the draft capital budget over the next month or two months, and we'll be presenting a capital budget in January and an operating budget in February. So I just prepared a PowerPoint presentation, so I'll just walk through that before we open up the floor for discussion. Just bear with me. Okay, is everyone able to see the PowerPoint? Okay, so some of the major budget pressures that we'll be facing were listed in the reports. So I'll go through those under salaries and benefits. We'll be incorporating a 2.2% cost of living adjustment based on October CPI. That's consistent with past years. There is 3% to 3.5% grid step movement for eligible staff and increases related to the QB salary grid. Then benefit costs will also go up proportionate to those salary increases. For insurance, our insurer has advised us to anticipate a premium increase of 8% to 10%, and that's consistent across the municipal sector.
Are we answering or asking questions as we go through this or at the end, Jessica?
No, you can ask questions as we go. That's fine.
Okay, I think it's been asked in the past, and I think it's been councillor Nash who's asked for it, and I think council has sort of concurred, that we call our broker, I guess, and say we want to shop those because it seems to us every year we have this, at least at this stage in the budget, we have this, you know, far greater than inflation sort of increases. So I don't know what, say, the last three years, the premiums, the insurance premiums have gone up. And if there's significant particularity that we ask our broker to take it to market. I take my personal insurance to market every couple of years with my broker, and I don't think there's a lot of work for us to do as staff. We just simply call them and say, "Shop it and let us know the results," right? So can we do that?
Yeah, I can certainly look into that. I'm not sure if we would have to prepare a full RFP or whether our broker can do that for us, but I can certainly look into it. But I do know that it is a very competitive market, and there's not a lot of options for municipalities just because insurers don't want to insure because of that, because of the nature of our business and the
Well, are we confident in our broker, I guess is the question? It'd take a lot more time to go out for RFQ or P and ask for brokers and stuff. God, we won't have it by the time we want to set our budget.
Right.
So if we're confident with our current broker, I say, you know, get him to do his work. That's what he should be doing anyway, rather than just rolling it over and saying, "Oh, it's an 8% increase," you know?
Right.
Let's make him work.
Okay. Yes, I can certainly look into that and I'll update council when we present the draft budget.
I think that I'm not opposed to doing that, but I think that the answer that you're, well, I pretty much know the answer that you're going to get. They, we're in what they refer to as a hard market. And that means that those premium increases are not are not unusual for the market, based on the information that I have. So I'm just I'm just cautioning that I don't expect that somebody will come back and say, "If we switch the insurer, that we can get it down to 5% or something." I'd be surprised if that were to happen.
And through you, Mr. Mayor, councillor Nash here. As councillor Lam had said, yeah, I've been asking for us just to check our insurance rates for a few years before we renew. And, you know, sometimes you change brokers, sometimes you change insurers. Sometimes you might split things apart, maybe all our fleet vehicles are with one insurer and our liabilities with somebody else. So, you know, if staff, if that's Jessica or somebody else can look into that, and I think as councillor Lam said, we reach out to our broker and see which insurance firms they deal with and who, you know, what other rates we can get through them, and then maybe we look if there's another broker somewhere that works with different municipal insurers, or if we separate out stuff, you know, there's always ways to do it. And it's a shame, but I think as councillor Lam alluded to, normally, if people stay with the same insurer for long periods of time, they find that they're actually overpaying and changing insurers every several years. And I know that depends on how many claims there's been and things like that, but I think it is a good exercise to do and to come back to us. And if, in fact, we're getting the best rates possible, then that's great. And I did have that on my comments that I'll say later today, this exact item. But I also think that's something that can be done also for the health benefits, I'll call it. Whoever we use for extended health benefits, sometimes it's worth that same practice just to look at what other rates are. So thank you for letting me speak to that. And thank you for raising that concern, councillor Lam.
Jessica, I would say on this insurance thing that I'd like to know, for instance, the last three years, what's happened to the rates. About three years ago, they went down actually because there was one participant who was using a lot of the benefit programs and like a significant amount of money. And that person is no longer doing that. So actually, our rates came down, I recall, at that point. But anyway, I think you sort of get the gist of what council's looking for here.
Yep, I can certainly look into that and provide an update at a future meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments about insurance? Hey, no, okay. So next area is utilities and energy. So propane, we don't currently have an estimated increase for 2026. It is a volatile market, but we do anticipate an increase. Hydro is projecting an increase of about 5% to 7%.
Again, the propane, we have a big consortium in Whitestone of people that get a rate, special rate, and ours this year is 62 cents. The municipal rates are generally lower than that, so and our consortium is with Superior. But I know that we did a, again, this is the background to it. We did a competitive bid about, oh, I'm going to say four or five years ago now, and Superior won out over Moore and some of the other ones, Georgian Bay Propane and that sort of thing. But, you know, ours should be lower than 62 cents.
And through you, Mr. Mayor, just going off again what councillor Lam just said there. I know for our properties, like they are residential, but we have a locked-in rate that's been provided from our supplier, and that rate's gone down 20% since next year. So maybe staff can reach out to our current supplier. And I know, as councillor Lam just said, we're in the same boat with locked-in for our winter rates. So hopefully those rates are out there, and maybe it's a time to, again, look at the market if you know what some of the rates are. Our rate's a little bit higher than what councillor Lam said, but not too much higher. So I think we'll find the propane rates if we lock in for the winter down from last year.
Ours were actually up about 3 or 4 cents. Well, anyway, I guess it's something that can be looked into.
Yes, absolutely. Staff will look into that. And then just continuing on, for fuel prices, early projections are indicating a modest decrease from 2025, but fuel does remain volatile and the overall cost will depend on usage. So for contracted services, our waste disposal and hauling costs will be increasing. We don't have a rate yet, but we're looking into that. The OPP levy, we are expecting an increase, but it has been capped at 11%. We should be getting that within the next couple of weeks. And then our software and digital systems, we have ongoing annual increases for our different maintenance and subscription plans, which are unavoidable because we rely on those systems to operate administratively. For capital, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Jessica. It's councillor Nash. I was just going to say in regards to possible looking at some items that we might be able to do ourselves there, when you just said internally. You know, I think we can look at maybe doing some dust control ourselves, trimming at the sides of the road, brushing, I'll call it, those types of items. I know in one of the reports that said that cemeteries, we might be doing ourselves. So I think there's some review that we can look at. Some of the haulage of disposal or bins, we might be able to do ourselves. So I encourage staff to look at that. And yes, we might need some equipment to do that, but look at ways in the long term how it might be cost-effective when you bring the budgets back. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Yes, absolutely. We will look into that. Okay, any other comments on contracted services or questions? Okay, all right. For capital, the public works manager and myself are currently reviewing the asset management plan to prioritize what should be included for 2026, also looking at any lifecycle maintenance requirements for our different assets, for equipment and facilities and roads. We do have some existing commitments from prior years, so we will be rolling those forward into the 2026 budget. But in those cases, the funding has already been set aside. For example, because of the public works manager's late start in the year in May, we couldn't complete the resurfacing program this year, but we are utilizing our OSIF funding for that. So we're just deferring that funding into next year when we can do that work.
So, Jessica, there's the AMP asset management plans. There's at least two of them that I know of. One is for build or for roads and bridges, and then there's a second one for buildings and other assets. So, and they do exist, and I've seen in council, maybe not last year because we were kind of caught, you know, staff-wise. But there used to be a chart that said, you know, 2025, we're going to do this, 2026, this, 2027, that. And it named the specific roads and that sort of thing. So that chart needs to, before it comes back to council, be updated to begin with, to take off sort of, or at least to identify those things that have been done, and then carry on with those things that I guess staff is recommending to us in terms of of going forward this year. So that's my only comment on the asset management plans.
Yes, you're absolutely right. The 2021 asset management plan did include a detailed schedule of assets and when their anticipated replacement date was and what the cost would be. However, the most recent asset management plan for 2024, which was just approved earlier this year, which included both core and non-core assets, it was at a higher level. And we are still working with our consultant to get that underlying data that drove that report. So we're currently working with them and then reconciling that against the detail that was in the 2021 plan. We just want to make sure that everything's been adjusted for inflation and based on any increase in useful life. So we will certainly provide more detail when we present the capital budget.
Jessica? Yeah, Jessica, I was just wondering when you think that will be ready? Will it be in January? That last phase of our asset management, because it's, I'm just wondering when we're going to be able to see that?
Yes, the 2025 asset management plan, we are a little bit behind getting that finalized. So as you know, the 2024 plan was not approved until earlier this year, back in May. So we're currently working on that 2025 plan, which is the 2024 was our current levels of service. The next plan is going to be what do we want our future service to be? So we have had to put the brakes on that because of staffing capacity. So we'll be kicking that project back up with our consultants in January, and she's indicated that it's probably just a few months of work left. So I'm hoping that within the first quarter, we can present that to council. However, when we present, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Well, and when we do get it, is it a projection for a number of years, like for the next 20 years or the next 30 years as to what we should do, when and where?
Yes.
How does, okay.
Yep, and it will include options for how much funding you want to be putting into the maintenance of our assets and the replacement of our assets.
Well, that should come to us whenever we're talking about the capital budget. When is that? In January, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, when you said in the first quarter, it's got to be ready for our for our meeting in January.
I'm not sure that we'll be able to meet that timeline.
Well, how can we talk about capital then? That's, I mean, that's the majority of our capital, other than computers and a few other things, right? If we, I mean, the asset management plans include bridges and roads and buildings. What else do we add? Like, we can't have a discussion in January if you don't have the figure.
I think we're talking about two different things, though. The asset management plan, the 2025 one that Jessica's talking about, is about service level. So the work on, that she was talking about earlier with regard to reconciling the 2024 and the 2021, we'll give you the lists of assets and those sorts of things. The 2025, the will give you the lists of assets and those sorts of things. The 2025, uh, the 2025 plan speaks about service levels in the future, so it's not as key when it comes to actually talking about, like, it, uh, it's required for government, but it's not as key when it comes to actually managing your assets. It's, the past ones are the main reports that we've got to look at when we, when we're getting into the
So I, I remember the 2025 one or twenty, uh, the 2024 that we passed, I guess, in 2025. I thought it had, that had to do with buildings. Uh, no, you're talking about service levels. Like, what, what Nigel, are you talking about in terms of service levels?
Uh, the 2024 plan, it, it was all assets, but it, uh, it's, and it spoke to how much, I, I guess on a, on a grant, on a bigger, uh, bigger picture item, I guess, how much we should be investing in our assets and/or investing in our, uh, in our reserve funds. 2025 plan is the next phase, and it speaks to service levels, i.e. do you want to do, uh, do more or do less, uh, about certain things? So it's not so much
Seen that one yet.
No, we haven't seen that one yet. And that's the one that I don't think is vital to our capital asset, uh, discussion in January. So it, it is a process that we're gonna, you're gonna be seeing in, in the first quarter of, uh, quarter of the year, but I don't think it's vital to have that information for your 2026 budget.
But we do need information from 2021 and 2024.
Absolutely, yeah.
We, we need those in order to have a substantive discussion on capital, right?
And that, and that is what will be coming forward, is the 2024, 2025.
Okay, I didn't realize we were doing another one on service levels.
So, so I, I guess, the, well, it's something that I'm wondering about here is we, in the past, what I think we've done, you know, we typically have two meetings, which are, which are now scheduled for, I don't know, January, February, whatever, but, um, we would normally do the operating budget first and do the capital later, and I, I'm guessing that that's because some of the information on specific projects would take longer to get. Like, if we're going to, you know, replace a bridge or do something major like that, we may have, there, there may be some work done to come up with the numbers in order to be able to put it into the capital budget. Would it, it sounds to me like you've got capital in January and operating and, and other things in February. Am I right or wrong about that? I mean, is there, is it, is there an opportunity to change, change the order around and give us more time, or are you not concerned about, about having the information, all the detailed information that we need for, for, for specific projects for the capital budget, for the 2025 capital budget?
Um, no, I, I'm, I'm confident that we can prepare a capital budget for January. Um, the capital budget is quite smaller than the operating budget, and it also impacts the operating budget. So typically municipalities do present a capital budget first prior to operating.
Okay.
Yeah, and through, through you, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, Scott here. Um, just, uh, something to look into, I think, when it, when it comes back. At the end of today's meeting, I'll kind of say my, my little point form notes I had, but I think, um, it'll be important, um, when we look at the capital on, to me, a few things that I think are really important. I think continuing operations on the landfill that we started this year with compacting, I think that's a very crucial thing for longevity of the, uh, the landfills. And I also think continuing to do our improvements that we've been starting on some of the, uh, the boat launches, be it some, some docks, um, things like that. I know I've been, been speaking with the, uh, the fire chief about, uh, the helipad and some asphalting that might be required there for the helicopters, cause they're picking up gravel there. I think these are some things that hopefully we can get in capital this year, but also hopefully maybe find a way that there's some grant opportunities for some of these things. And one of the most important ones, I think, is currently with, the works department's really started to focus on the landfills with the compaction, but we don't really have a survey of where the exact property pins are for the footprint of the landfill or fencing at the back of it. And I think we have a very large liability there, that if somebody enters the dump, um, we, somebody could get injured, and there is no, no trespassing signs kind of thing. So I think that is something that we should really try and find a way to put in our capital budget this year to make sure that both landfills are fenced. Now, it could be with farm fence, um, but I think we need that and some OLS to help with the, um, the landfill works we're doing. Um, and I'll, I'll bring up some more ideas at the end, but I think those are just a couple of ideas that, uh, that we should really look into, along with, of course, our continued, um, gravelling of, of roads and, and things like that. And, uh, I think it's important that the gravelling continues. And if some of the funding is gone, I think we, we should really think of how we might be able to find funding through grants or from, uh, from doing more internal works. I think it was absolutely fantastic when I found out that, um, our own crews are, are doing resurfacing of the bridge out at, out in Maple Island. And, uh, that our own crews, um, anyway, our own crews were able to do some guardrail repairs, which we haven't done in the past, but we found ways to do it this year, which I think is great for cost savings. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Can we, can we let Jessica finish her, her, uh, budget pressures?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, okay, so to continue, um, we have a number of external levies, um, that we don't really have control over. Those are mandatory, not optional. Um, most of them have not yet been confirmed, so we'll make sure that those are updated and included in the draft budget. Uh, and then finally, we do have some, um, revenue losses that we're experiencing. Um, first off is the loss of the Nord's grant for gravel resurfacing, which is approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars annually.
Did you explain that to us a little more, Jessica? I mean, we've been getting this for years, haven't we?
Yeah, it was a five-year funding program, um, and this was the final year of that program. Um, the contact that we have at Nord's indicated that they are looking at a replacement funding stream, but they don't have details yet. So they're going to keep us updated. Um, they said that they're open to discussions for any other funding opportunities that might be available for us. So, uh, myself and the Public Works Managers are in active discussions with them. Um, now, the offset expense for gravel is two hundred and twenty thousand, so the net impact was a hundred thousand. So if we, if we lose that funding, the Public Works Manager has indicated he would recommend, um, going down from three to one roads for gravel resurfacing annually. Um, that might not be permanent, but just until we can get our, our funding stabilized.
But later on, and I forget what the name of it is, seems to be going up by seventeen percent, which is, you know, I think it was over a million something, so that, anyway, um, I, again, I don't know what the total impact is, but, uh, um, we lose here and maybe we gain somewhere else. Uh, can you go back?
Yeah, sorry.
The recycling revenue, the only thing I had written down there, it says thirty thousand. Does that include the metal that we didn't sell this year that we hopefully will sell next year?
No, that is
That recycling revenue?
No, that's specifically for recycling revenue through that, um, producer responsibility program, um, which we don't have a lot of control over, but they have, um, they've redone the funding formula. However, they did indicate to us if we can establish the costs for running that depot, they may be able to adjust our, our funding amount. So that thirty thousand dollar revenue reduction is not final at this point. We're, we're trying to mitigate that.
But somewhere else in the budget, you'll be, I guess, doubling up on what we normally would get in a year on, in metal, right? Cause there's quite a pile, I know, at York Street.
Yes, um, I might need to ask the Public Works Manager to comment on that.
Yes, we will. We'll be able to make up some of it, if not most of it, uh, on that, uh, scrap metal that we have there. It'll be there to use, so.
Okay, and it'll be reflected in the budget, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, um, any other comments, questions, concerns about our budget pressures? Okay, hearing none, I'll move on to some good news, um, some favorable, favorable budget impacts. Um, so we are going to be getting a reduction in our WSIB premium rate. Um, uh, it'll be about a seven and a half percent reduction. Um, in addition, they've give, they've, um, given us another surplus of about twenty-nine thousand, which will offset, um, in our 2025 budget.
So I guess, Nigel, the question is, you don't foresee any, any additional staff at this point, right?
I, um, through, through you, your worship, uh, no, I, I, I don't anticipate any, uh, any need for additional staff. I guess that's somewhat dependent on what I hear from, from council, whether, whether or not there are any, uh, you know, um, service standards that you want to bring up, but I, I don't see that happening. So right now, I would say it's status quo in terms of staffing. Uh, we have, uh, as Jessica will show you in a second there, we have managed to save a little bit with one of the positions. Um, reduced the hours a little bit, so we had a small savings there of about five thousand dollars. So I don't expect any increases.
Okay, I'd heard, and this is a bit of a, uh, left turn here, but I heard something about the grant writing. Um, again, there's an RFQ that, or RFP that's supposed to be going out, uh. Um, I don't know what that's really gonna achieve in the end. I don't think anyone's gonna write our grants for under ten percent, but that's my own personal feeling, but that needs to go out. But also, it seems to me that Magnetawan got quite a few grants, or at least a lot more than we got, and uh, as I talked to you the other day, Nigel, I mean, can we find out what Magnetawan and McKellar are doing in terms of grant writing? And if we don't have the skill set to do it, uh, can we possibly, you know, have grants identified by people and whoever's employed in those two municipalities, and obviously we'd have to pay for it. But, but we can't just sit back and, and in, in, in a wider range, not be, you know, have someone responsible for grant writing, right? That's pretty important part of our, uh, or potentially part of our budget. But, uh, the problem with grant writing is you have to identify what you want to write in practically through the budget process, because all these grants, you're gonna have to pay forty or fifty percent yourselves, right? And you know, you can't put it in, you know, if you don't put it in the budget, you're gonna have to open the budget or something at some later date, and so I guess we need, it's sort of a catch-22. We don't know what grants are out there, so we don't know what sort of projects that we could apply for under those grants. So, you know, this is a big area. Counselor Nash has brought it up, and, and I'm bringing it up, and I think others, that we need to get serious about our grant writing, right? Uh, surely to God, there's a, a list somewhere of all the provincial grants for municipalities, and we can research those and, and bring them to council to say, you know, at some point in the future, here's all the grants that are gonna be coming up this year, whether it's Trillium or gravel or whatever, and what are some of the projects that we can budget, uh, for, uh, if any, in our budgeting process. So it's a pretty significant area, in my opinion, so I, I, I just want to put that in because I know Counselor Nash had brought up, uh, uh, grant writing, so, anyway, thank you. And in the past, uh, again, Jessica, uh, Pat Allen and others were, were doing grants. I know my wife wrote a few and for the library and a playground and things like that, but, uh, uh, anyway, we have to, we have to crack that nut when it comes to grant writing. Thank you.
Just, uh, just to quickly respond to some of that, uh, Counselor Lamb, I, I do, I hear what you're saying, and I, I think we'll take that direction from, uh, uh, from this discussion in terms of looking into what some of the other municipalities are doing. I think really in, in, in reality, 2025 was a bit of a lost year when it comes to grants, just due to, uh, your turnover of your key positions. You had a, a CAO that joined in December, uh, treasurer in, uh, March, I think, and, uh, Public Works Superintendent in May. So it really did put us behind the eight ball on some of that stuff, and hopefully this year we'll be able to, uh, spend more of our time looking into that, I think, is, is what we, we can do.
Good, thank you. Good answer.
And just to add to that, um, we did apply for the traditional grants that the municipality has applied for annually, um, including the Canada Day Grant and the Community Emergency Preparedness Grant. Um, in addition, staff are investigating a summer student grant for 2026 to fund some of our public work students.
There are also Trillium grants. I know that the, um, uh, Ardbeg Community Hall, I wrote a letter of support for them. Uh, they're doing some work, uh, on their buildings up there and, uh, are applying for a Trillium grant. I thought it was like a hundred twenty grand or something, but, uh, anyway, that's another grant, so.
Okay, um, just to move on, um, another area of savings that was already noted was, um, moving cemetery grass cutting in-house. Uh, the Public Works Managers looked at having the students do that for the 2026 season, so that will result in approximately seven thousand dollars in savings. And we'll certainly, um, look into any other areas where we can start, um, bringing work more in-house. Um, for revenues, um, we've completed the funding application for the 2026 Canada Day Grant. Um, and we're hoping for an increase in that funding amount, um, based on the actual expenses that we incur for that event. Um, our annual grants for core infrastructure have been annailed, so for CCBF, we'll be getting approximately seventy thousand dollars, and for OSIF, we'll be getting approximately a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Um, that's in addition to some of that funding that we've had to put into a deferred revenue account, um, due to not spending it in prior years. Uh, so we do have, um, some healthy funding available for us, to us for core infrastructure. Um, next is our Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund funding. Um, that's increasing by seventy, seventeen percent, and our annual allocation will be, um, a little over one and a half million dollars for 2026.
So that's good news. That's two hundred fifty thousand dollars plus, eh?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's the one I was talking about earlier. We, we, the gravel part's gone, but this has gone up significantly, which is, which is good. And, and that's funding for, for what exactly, uh, Jessica?
Um, it
What sort of things can we spend on, uh, with that funding?
It, it's not restricted, so, um, it basically goes in our budget and offsets, offsets our expenses.
Well, that's good news for our budget.
Mm-hmm.
Significant, good news.
Yes.
What about the annual increases for the core infrastructure? The seventy thousand and the one thirty-six, how much are those up?
Um, I
Where are they?
CCBF was not an increase. It was in line with what we received in 2025, and OSIF was, uh, actually a slight reduction, um, because it's based on asset data, and there were some corrections to our asset data, which resulted in a bit of a decrease in our funding allocation.
Okay, thank you. And when we will, will we get the user fees, like in February or March or something?
Yes, you'll get those. Uh, I am hope, I, I plan to provide those along with the draft operating budget in February. So staff are currently doing a comparability analysis with all of the local area municipalities to see where our current charges are in line with what, um, what everyone else is charging, and in addition, any additional user fees that we could incorporate.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, any other, uh, questions or comments about our favorable budget impacts?
Yeah, go find some more.
We will do our best. Okay, so, um, just to try to guide the discussion today, um, we broke it out into four areas where council can provide some input into the budget and, um, what gets included in our draft. So the first area is service levels. So whether you want to maintain, enhance, or reduce our existing services. So that could be things like, um, road maintenance priorities, um, you know, response times, um, how much funding we want to put into our recreation programming and our event programming, um, landfill operating hours, things like that. Um, secondly is capital priorities. Uh, so any new capital initiatives that you wish staff to investigate, as well as any high-level impact, it's, sorry, high-level input you have on any specific asset groups, um, locations or service areas that council feels requires further assessment. Um, so you know, if there's potentially a road out there that you're concerned about the condition, um, you can let us know, and we can investigate whether we can prioritize that soon or rather. you can let us know and we can investigate whether we can prioritize that sooner rather than later. And we'll return with the costing, timing, and prioritization options in the draft capital budget. Thirdly, is a reserve, any input into the reserve strategy. So whether we want to continue or adjust our yearly contributions to reserves, whether we want to use reserves to stabilize tax increases, and long-term planning for infrastructure. The last area would be the revenue strategy. So what your tax levy expectations are, whether you want to maintain, increase, or have a phased-in approach. We've already talked about user fees. As I mentioned, we're doing that comparability analysis, but if there's any specific user fees you want us to look into. And then we've talked a little bit, but little bit about grant opportunities, but any other future grant opportunities you'd like staff to look into. So at this point, we thought that we would just open the floor for discussion in these four areas, so we can start with service levels. I don't know if we want to go around the table and and start that way, if each councillor and the mayor wants to provide their input.
Can you go back to the previous chart to show us what you want comment on? Yeah, thank you. So I can kind of comment on some of these things if it's through you, Mr. Mayor. I I guess, you know, we don't have enough information to, I mean, I think most people are going to say they'd love to enhance the service levels, but I think if we can maintain them this year, I think is is probably the goal. But again, you have to see all the numbers before you can answer that question. Again, the roads man management priorities are whatever, I think from my standpoint, whatever the roads department and 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 our C A O bring forward to us, obviously are going to be the priorities. The recreation events, obviously, we have to review. I would put a fourth dot point, and that's the library. And libraries looked at at their their budget, and there's gonna, there's gonna be a significant increase potentially because of two things. Last year, we we stabilized the hours so that the hours are the same all year. And we used some some grants that aren't there anymore. I forget exactly specifically what they are. But we also did programming up in in Ardberg at the community hall, which was very well received. And we were up there four times a month. I think they were on Mondays. So anyway, long story short, council's gonna have to make decisions on those two things because the grant funding for them is no longer available. So so there'll be an option, I think, to 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 look at those. So I would put a fourth point being the library. Capital projects, I I really don't have any new ones to suggest. Well, maybe I can just finish it that for service levels, and if others want to say something about service levels, they can, and then we can go on to capital priorities and reserves and that sort of thing.
Any other comments about service levels? I guess my my comment would be, I, it's pretty much what, you know, like Counselor Lamb said, i- i- is, you you kind of have to look at the details of of the specific items that are that are there. But I I certainly wouldn't see us decreasing services. I mean, the library's actually a good example. We introduced the new program, which was an expansion of service, which was last year, which was funded by a Trillium grant. And that's a one-time thing. It was seed funding. But I wouldn't see us taking that. I I I think it would be a mistake for us to say, oh, well, we don't have funding for that this year, so we're just gonna not do it. So that's that's gonna have a budget implication and 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 I'd be in favor of maintain maintaining the service levels that we've that we've established. So, you know, that's, but but I guess we look at what the implications are in in some areas, you know, if we you know, we need a lot more detail to look at something like roads, for example, and and that kind of thing. But again, I wouldn't overall be suggesting that we change it, that we reduce it. Any anybody else on that subject?
Yeah, hello, Mr. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Counselor Bray, sorry.
Oh, okay, thank you, thank you, Counselor Nash. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think we, I I would also like to see us try to be able to maintain our service levels if we can. I think that there may be some things that we have to really look at and say, you know, where are we, where do we have to maybe do slight reductions of it, but or or maintaining and not not growing things? It may be that we have to to look at those kinds of things. And yeah, it's gonna mean that in the long run, our our levy will reflect where we're at. I'd like to see that we can do, continue with our community programming. And I'd like to us to be able to provide those things. I think that's about it for service levels. Thanks. I'm done, Counselor Nash.
Yeah, thank you. So in regards to the service levels, I kind of had a summary that I'd probably talk about at the end. For the service levels, I think there's a couple of things to focus on. I agree, we should try and keep the service levels where where we have them in the sense of not decreasing service. But I also think that maybe we can look at the the landfills for maybe some increased service levels of doing things. Example, maybe taking tires, which the government now pays for, or or doing some other things like that. Increased, maybe it's increased hours or locations. I think that's something I think we have to continue to focus on. The the boat launches for increased services. I know staff are still trying to get some work done this year, but with the weather, especially out today in some of the municipality, it's getting hard to finish some of the stuff. But I think we've seen some good feedback on on those service levels. And I think the biggest one that I think we really need to focus on for increased services, as in service levels, is is two things. One of them is in the bylaw. And that's in in ensuring that we're effectively reviewing locations, issuing tickets, and we have to, or warnings in some instances. And for building services, but I don't know how much it falls just under building services. But the service levels of ensuring non-permitted bills and things like that are noted and staff work with impact. And I think that's an increased service level that we can do. And I think by doing that, we increase revenues. But I think the Works Department has done good. I agree with seeing what we can do for the library. And I know next year is really going to be the first full year for staff, the new staff, to to really see how those service levels are. So thank you very much.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The only other thing in service level that I, I guess I'm butting in, I don't know whether Counselor Woods wants to say anything. But the only other thing is, I don't want us to lose sight of the idea of perhaps moving some some landfill, some garbage from York Street to to Ald's landfill site. It may be viable or not, but at least I want a paper coming back or something saying it is or isn't. And what our options are there and and the pluses and minuses, et cetera. So thank you.
Counselor Woods, did you have any comments on?
Mr. Mayor, I'll keep it short, because my throat's killing me, but I would like to see everything maintained. I don't want to see us reduce anything unless absolutely necessary because of financial constraints. The getting to what Counselor Lamb had just said there about shifting some of the garbage from York out to Ald's. I think what we've seen, or what I've witnessed anyways with our new manager of Public Works is we've got somebody in that actually has some some new ideas about how to do things. And I think the compaction program that he started has given us years and years of life on those dumps. I don't think we'll have to shift any garbage from from York Street out to Ald's, to be honest with you. I don't want to see the library program not get funded out in Ardberg. I think that's a fantastic thing for the community. There's been a lot of positive feedback. It's a really good thing. I'll just leave it at that, Mr. Mayor. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So what's next?
I guess capital priorities.
Yeah, do you want to move on to capital? Jessica, well, I guess.
So I, again, I guess my feeling on this is a lot of this is going to come from staff, right? And I guess unless there's some new initiative from a capital standpoint, you know, that takes priority or that we know or we want to talk about, I really don't have any. Again, we're going to get all our reports on on the various management or asset management plans, including the service levels and the buildings and the bridges and roads. So I mean, that's ninety percent or more of our of our capital spend, right? So I don't have any new projects that I'm thinking of, other than, you know, maybe some of the things that that we've talked about already. So thank you.
And and through you, Mr. Chair, if I might, unless Jessica, you had something you wanted to speak to first. Okay, so for the capital, again, I had kind of a summary I was gonna go over, but I'll do that at the end. But I'm just gonna pull out a couple of things. And I think for some of the new capital initiatives, I look at, again, I I brought it up earlier, I think some paving would be a good capital initiative. Hopefully, there's some funding. But when I say paving, I'll I'll give a a couple of examples. Ald's Road, just from five twenty to the landfill, that's always more of a challenge in the late fall, winter and spring, not past the dump. But I think getting some some asphalt down there would be beneficial for our landfills. I think for emergency services, doing some work up at the Ardberg Fire Hall, helipad, I'll call it, or paving so that the helicopter can land easier there. Maybe there's a grant we can do for that would be a great initiative. And I understand from the fire chief that they're looking to put a standpipe, which I think is a great idea, at Goose Neck Landing. And I think, again, paving so that they can plow that in the winter to access the standpipe, maybe there's a grant available for that. And I think if that is done, we can use that as an example of some line painting on some asphalt. And if we use that as an example, hopefully in the future years, we can pave areas like Indian Narrows with some some works going down the road for for better traffic control at the boat launches. I also think in our budget, we should be looking at possibly some capital works on some of the boat launches, being some docks that we might be able to do. And I know Counselor Woods's throat is is sore, so I'll bring it up, and I'm sure he'll speak to it. But Dubois Lake, there's been a lot of logging that's gone on off the Bunny Trail. And because of the logging roads that's been put in, there is a great opportunity for us for maybe to expand upon our our boat launches and put one on Dubois Lake on the south side, very close to one of the logging trails. So I think that might be a possible new capital initiative that we might be able to do. And I'm sure continuing focusing on our landfills, I think, is really one of the biggest initiatives that we can do, and hopefully there is some funding for it in the sense of, like I said earlier, fencing around them for safety and security. Maybe there's some equipment that the Works Department's gonna want to take for that. And again, I think it was absolutely fantastic that our Works Department was able to do some bridge repairs ourselves. But really look at, I think it's important that we focus on the Ald's dam rebuilding and what we might be able to do there to work with the ministry on the Ald's Road Bridge. And I think that's really important as an initiative for capital on what we're going to do there long term. Because I think it's gonna come up really quickly. And when I'm talking about paving, I think I'm talking about actually putting down asphalt and not slurry seal if we can get funding for it. And I think the Works Department has done a great job this year in the projects, even though they might not have been big capital projects. The amount of drainage that's been worked on and culverts, so I'd like to see that continued. And if the Works Department needs some additional funds for gravel or for ditching, culverts, that kind of stuff. And in some of the areas where there's rocks coming through on some of the slurry seals that we do have done, or the tar and chip. For example, the Bunny Trail or Balsam Road or Maple Island, it'd be great. And I know it's something that the Works Manager's trying to focus on, is to try and find ways to get some of those rocks or objects out of the roads. And if you need some funding for that, I'd like to see if there's a way that the Works Department can build that into the budget for some of these capital initiatives. And then I wasn't able to speak, but when I I was tied up there, but when it came, so hopefully you allow me, Mr. Mayor. But when it came to the grants, what I'd like to see for that is simply, I understand it might have been a lost year. And to be honest, I think the last several years have been lost years in grant writing. I know Pat Allen, as was mentioned, used to do great, great work on getting grants. And to me, if, you know, if we applied for two grants last year, I'd like to see us apply for four or six grants this year. And even if we don't get the grants, I think staff just writing the grants, the public knowing we tried to get the grants, hopefully we're successful in them, I think goes a long way, even if we try in some of the grants. I know I've sent some links to to some staff members on some of the grants that are out there, and I'm sure they're looking at them. And again, just trying, I think we we do have good staff. And we have staff that are capable of being able to write grants. I know time's limited for them sometimes. But I think we just try and
Excuse, excuse me, what's the background noise that's making it very hard to hear?
Sorry, Counselor Bray, it was dinging of a bell in the background, an alarm, but I did that. So sorry about that.
No, no, there's, there's, there's something, it's like you're typing or something, or.
Oh, that's not me. That's not me then. It must be somebody else.
That noise, right there.
I have no idea.
Someone must have their mic open.
No, it is coming from you, Counselor Nash. It's a clicking noise.
Not sure what it would be, but I'll I'll wrap it up, because I think I was finishing off there anyways. I'm not sure what that noise would be, though, Mr. Mayor. Sorry about that. Thank you for letting me know, Counselor Bray.
Just to interrupt, Counselor Nash, I I think it's just the way you're holding your phone. If you're moving your phone around while you're talking, we're hearing static and scratching.
Anyway, can we?
The the capital projects, I have something else to say. Yeah, I mean, I I guess, Counselor Nash, what it comes down to is is what our roads superintendent or public works superintendent thinks in terms of the viability and the 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 viability and the the cost, uh total cost all in of asphalt uh versus uh uh tar and chip and then putting a slurry seal on it. So I'd be interested, not today, but uh in a discussion on that when we when we do bring items back at the particularly at the capital part in January. Um, I've heard, I've heard the story both ways. I know in the in the past McDougal did quite a bit of paving in 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 the municipality. And I heard from some people that that was the worst decision ever and from others that it was the best decision. So I I don't know the answer to that. So that's only a comment that I would make on the asphalt versus uh tar and chip and slurry seal. Uh, the the only other capital priority that I think we have to keep in mind is, and we're gonna, I guess, you know, be going over it at the end, is the sidewalk in in Dunchurch, right? Because we ran out of the hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar funding doesn't mean we throw it out the window and and say we're we're not going to do it. I think it's a very important uh project in terms of our school and the library and connecting the community. Um, so I think we have to look at what grants may be out there for that. And uh and also what we can apply in terms of our funds, particularly our reserve funds towards a sidewalk and what the current cost would be for putting a a a sidewalk. And I guess there's two kinds, a regular sidewalk or just an asphalt type uh sidewalk also. So uh I don't want us to lose sight of that. I asked Jessica yesterday, for instance, whether we could use the uh uh, well, Parkland dedication that we have quite a bit of money in a hundred and ninety thousand, whether we could use it for a sidewalk. To me, it's all part of the the campus in Dunchurch, I call it, and and they're all sort of like parkland and and service services and things like that. So and uh she wasn't sure of the answer, but I'm sure she could get it. So I just don't want us to lose sight of the sidewalk. But I I'm sure we would need a grant in order to complete it. So um uh thank you for uh I'm I'm done on this section. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, or sorry, is it okay if I speak for a second, Jessica, just in response to councillor Lamb there? Would that be okay?
Um, sure, yeah, I just wanted to reply to his uh question about the Parkland funding, but you can go ahead.
Oh, okay. It was just, I think it is really important for the grant, and I actually spoke to the to some staff about it. And it 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 really is a shame that we kind of lost focus, I'll call it, on on that grant that was there. And I think it was just due to staff turnover and information that was left by previous staff. But with that being said, um, similar to what I said about some of the boat launches and knowing that staff is still trying to get some work done there, there may be some way that staff might be able to get some work done on a sidewalk still this year. Um, in my eyes, I I'd spoken about, there was a a road allowance kind of coming off Bob's Crescent that connects to to the school road and Bob's Crescent. We could cut through there, but we could always get gravel delivered this year and paid for for that project, which would be allocated to it. Um, so that might be something staff might be able to look into for that. Um, just to see if there's a way to do that. And at least we get some funding from the government for it.
I think it was over private land, councillor Nash. Sorry to interrupt.
Well, yeah, I think for that councillor Lamb, it it goes, um, there was a road allowance application that was denied by council a couple of years ago for it's a twenty meter wide connection that connects Bob Crescent to the road for the school. I just forget the name of the road at this time. And that twenty meters, sixty feet wide is where we could cut through with the sidewalk, which was brought up the previous staff. And that's kind of when when the sidewalk project got derailed, I'll call it. But I did meet with the Works Manager out there to look at that area. And maybe there's something that can be done from a funding point of view to allocate some gravel, pay for the gravel this year. I'm not sure, he'd have to look into it further. But sorry to, I know Jessica, you're going to respond about the Parkland, but sorry about that. I just wanted to mention that to everybody. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Are we um are we done with capital priorities?
Um, through you, Mr. Mayor, um, I just wanted to.
You were going to respond, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I was, yeah, just didn't to um in reference to uh councillor Lamb's question about using Parkland dedication revenue for sidewalks. Um, it looks like that wouldn't really be an option. The sidewalk would have to be something that flows through an actual park. Um, a sidewalk on the side of the road wouldn't be eligible. Um, so the areas that we can use that funding for are acquisition of new Parkland, development of new parks, um, and improvement or upgrading of existing parks as well as recreational facility development. So in one of the attachments, um, I did include updated uh or estimated reserve balances as of the end of twenty twenty-five. And we're projecting to have a balance of about a hundred and seventy-one thousand in that Parkland reserve. Um, so uh that is one area where I think council could provide some input on whether there's any recreational opportunities or park opportunities you'd like staff to investigate. Um, in addition, there was a project uh for a recreation playground for twenty twenty-five that wasn't completed. So whether council would want that deferred to twenty twenty-six and whether they want that increase from ten thousand or leave it at ten thousand.
And and Jessica, councillor Nash here, um, just on the Parkland, they know we're off topic here, but I believe the new mandate is that sixty percent of the Parkland dedication has to be spent yearly or allocated to a specific project. And I know the previous year, I think before you were here, staff kind of didn't do that. We kind of had to try and fix that in this year's budgets. Hopefully, we're at that that sixty percent. And I think when you spoke to recreational areas, I think, again, I I'm speaking to the boat launches, but that's where um, previous staff looked into it and the boat launches did qualify as recreational areas. Um, so hopefully, when work's been done at those areas this year, it has gone into the Parkland dedication reserves to draw down that required sixty percent each year. Thank you.
I guess I take a little different view on the sidewalk. And I and again, I'm not arguing with you and and whatever, but but in order to get to our park, our main park, uh uh by the community center there, you have to safely get there, right? You know, or people can't use it in a sense, right? So uh if we if we set our schools there and we want our school to be able to get to the to the park, uh the anyway, maybe we have to get the right person who might tell us the right answer or something. I just, you know, I just wouldn't want to. I hear what you're saying, but maybe we need to make another call or 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 call Grayden Smith's office or something, right? So.
And through through you, Mr. Mayor, councillor Lamb, you might be on to something there. I think when I spoke about that road allowance, to me, what I would classify that as would be, we use the word sidewalk, but you could count that as a recreational trail connecting from the road to Bob's Crescent. And if it's a recreational trail, then you might be able to use the Parkland funding because it's a recreational thing, just like if there was a trail through a a valley land somewhere or something. So there might be ways on just the wording of a sidewalk, if you know where I'm coming from.
Yeah, I do.
Okay, guys, can we uh can we move on to um the reserve strategy? Any comments on reserve strategy?
Well, I I guess my only uh comment is that I'm uh I'm glad that we've we've increased the the uh reserves to, I think, around two million dollars or so. And I think when this council started, it was it's more like one million. But uh and again, that goes up and down depending on the projects that that you use. So I mean, a- again, this is really saving for the future and for our 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 projects coming up in the future so that we're not having to directly raise tax revenue by way of a tax increase. Um, so, you know, I'd like to see our our uh reserves uh staying at or near where we are, other than, of course, the the projects that we that we uh uh identify, I guess. So um, anyway, that's, I guess, my only real, real uh uh comment. I guess we can use uh again, some of these funds to to help offset, I guess, a a tax increase if we can. I again, I'd have to look at the whole budget before commenting really in that area. So um, yeah, that's using using reserves strategically to stabilize tax increases. That's really the the point of reserves, isn't it? So anyway, that's all I have to say with respect to reserves. And that we'll be able to use that seventy grand or whatever that Jessica talked about earlier. Uh, you know, perhaps that can be freed up to 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 uh stabilize, I guess, our tax increases. But but again, that's a slippery slope because if you don't have those sorts of of surpluses next year, the year after, you're going to have to pony up if you or or cut service levels. So I think we've all been through this enough that we understand, you know, the reserved areas. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair, if I might.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so the reserves are are one thing. Since coming on to council, I've really tried to lobby for in a way of trying to get a reserves, which I think more into line with where I believe they should be. And I think all of us on council have done a good job in recognizing that and increasing the reserves by hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um, I think, you know, as councillor Lamb said, you know, I think it's upwards of a million dollars or more, which is great. I think the one thing we need to be careful of when it comes to reserves is past staff, I'll call it, you know, would would end up, you know, just using an example, put five hundred thousand into reserves and take six hundred thousand dollars out and then would tell the public, well, we we put five hundred thousand dollars into reserves, or really, we've put negative a hundred thousand dollars in. But the last several years, we've actually increased the reserves. We haven't taken out an operating loan, which I think is really fabulous and really shows that council is really in the right direction of trying to improve our balance sheet for the long term. Perfect example was the very expensive fire truck we did, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars. And there's only a two hundred thousand dollar loan for that, whereas we look at a culvert we put in um on Bookview Trail that was three hundred grand. And we have a ten or a fifteen thousand year loan for that because we didn't have money in the reserves to take out. So I think we're much better situated for that. But I think at the same time, we really have to be careful when we look at tax increases and just taking out of reserves to keep a tax increase stable. There was just an article written in one of the papers, I think it was in North Bay, about um staff warning council that if you're only pulling out of reserves to keep taxes low, it's not really doing what the reserve funds are there for. The reserve funds are really there for items like new equipment or, well, we know that slurry seal on Balsam Road is a ten-year life expectancy. So we we want to make sure that each year we're putting money into the reserves. So when that life expectancy is up, we have money there to use. So I think we've really come a long way in the last three years of of really starting to focus on that and do it much better than we did. And I think that's something that I don't know if the public sees so much, but I certainly see. And I'd like to see us, again, putting money into the reserves. Um, we really have to look at what our asset management plan said. And I know last year we came pretty close to putting into reserves what what we were suggested, but just really picking when we're going to be pulling out of it um and focusing on what jobs we're going to do. But I think overall, again, we we have done a good job on that and and look for staff to to see what we did last year and try and complement that again um on what we did. So thank you uh for you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thanks. Um, I'm wondering if we could move on then to i- if there are any comments under revenue. Oh, sorry, did I councillor Bray, did you?
Yeah, I I just want. Through you, Mr. Mayor, I I I tend to agree with.
I'm in a meeting here.
With councillor Nash on um, you know, trying to make sure that we can put in the amount of of uh money in the reserves that is um in our asset management plan, because I I agree with him that this is supposed to be for future things, future um uh expenditures. And I'm hoping that we can do that uh in so that we're not putting the municipality at a disadvantage in the future. Uh, I think that's what this is, the asset management plan is all about, is to prepare us for the future so that we are able to um keep our municipality going and also to make sure that we're not um having to uh put the future in in jeopardy. So um I would I would agree with councillor Nash around um trying to maintain, putting in the reserves that we need to. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on reserves? Okay, can we can we look at the revenue strategy part, which was the just um, I I guess one of the things that that I think staff were hoping to get was some kind of sense as to what what our appetite would be for a tax increase. Um, I don't know if any of you want to comment on on that particular thing. And then I guess what I what I thought we would do is if we we get finished that, if we can have sort of one pass around about if there are any other uh projects that you or specific things that you haven't already talked about, uh then we could get that and maybe we're um, well, we do, we do, we do have more information here about the sidewalk, of course, but we've already talked about that. So I'm not sure if it warrants more discussion, but we're almost uh I think we're almost getting close to the end and uh it'll be twelve o'clock. We got half an hour to go and uh then we'll have to decide if we want to, if we want, if we want to continue, then we maybe we should take a break. But um or maybe we'll be, ho- hopefully, perhaps we'll be done. So um we we do this one, I this one last item on the on the uh you know, that they were seeking direction on and see if there are any comments on on that. And then we'll see what we have left.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, um councillor Nash, I can start here. Um, in regards to where I think are overall, you know, pulling a number out is a little little tricky because I know it depends on what we're putting in reserves and everything. But I know last year, I'm going to say, I had I had looked for a tax increase that would have been about a percent higher than what we had this year, but I I know it didn't pass through council. Um, that would have given us an extra thirty-something thousand dollars last year and this year, so sixty thousand. But I'm I'm looking at it. And when I say after you take the school numbers and everything into it, I'd like to see a number somewhere, you know, just under, I I'll say, but I'm going to use the five percent number. Um, I know some municipalities in our area are much higher than that. Some of the municipalities down in the GTA are lower than that. But but I I look at it and say, you know, four point nine percent or something, but I'm I'm just going to use the overall five percent number as I'd like to see it not higher than that, knowing that we need to do some work and put money into reserves. I think, you know, that's a number that again, we need to think about the future. We're trying to catch up with some stuff. So I look at it and say five percent. But I also look at it and say, um, you know, for this topic about about funding, um contributions or pressures, um, and user fees. And I look at this and say, when it comes to user fees, and I think some people might not agree with me on this, but if I go to a landfill in Barry or in Port Perry or in Hamilton, it might be a municipal landfill, but every time you go in, there is a fee. Um, so I think we can look at what are we charging? Um, so I think we can look at what are we charging? Knowing that our landfill, to close these landfills is gonna cost, in my eyes, millions of dollars. By the time we're done to cap them and everything. And, you know, each year we get a load of free brush. Well, other properties I own outside of Whitestone, I don't get a load of free brush every year. You go to the dump, you pay fees, um, but they accept tires, for example, but you might pay a fee, and then that's offset by revenue we get. From, uh. From the environmental fees that are charged on tires now. Even if I go and dump scrap metal, for example, off at a landfill in Barry, I pay for it. So I think, you know, it might be something to look at. I think some people in the public might understand it, some might not. But again, if you, if you have a property in Toronto, you pay a property tax. You pay a water bill tax, and you pay, uh, a landfill tax. We don't separate them out like that, but I think, you know, we could look at maybe some user fees for that. I think, um, it's been brought up a couple times, but I think we have to look at our user fees when it comes to. Things such as, um, the shore road allowance purchases. And looking at that and increasing the fees possibly on that for some added revenue. And I think the biggest one to me, which has been brought up a lot of the time, is. Builds that might not have been reported to MPAC because permits weren't taken out. Or somebody has a garage that wasn't permitted, or a whole house that wasn't permitted. Um, and I think that's something that we can really look at, and I think we'd be amazed at what. We can generate in taxes when. Staff go through that, it might be a very daunting task, having to start somewhere, but, you know. For every hundred thousand dollars or something of, of illegal builds, we find out they're illegal improvements. You know, I'm rounding, but it's, you know, six hundred dollars or something, and when you get into, you keep adding that number year after year. Um, I think we're looking at very large numbers that we can increase our revenues by, by looking at that. And working with MPAC, but MPAC needs the information from us, and I know we're asking a lot of staff to do it. But that's something I'd really like to see us focus on in a way to do some, some further revenue. In that, and again, for user fees, as I summarized, it might be at the landfill and for shore road purchases. Um, and I'm looking at, you know, five percent, um, where we can, and as for grant opportunities. Anywhere staff can see a grant opportunity from a road improvement to gravel. To a trail system, whatever you guys can see that think it might work. I, I would apply for it and let council know we've applied and see what we get back and then work with it. Council might not know all the grants that are out there, but when you guys see something. I'd urge you guys to apply for things that you think might be beneficial to the municipality and see what we get and, and work from there. And, uh, I look forward to seeing more grants being written. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you, um.
Well, I'll go second. I'm a percent low in terms of, or one percent lower than councillor Nash. It's really hard to spitball at this, you know, not having any information except what's provided today. I mean, the budget sort of direction, where you're going, you have capital projects that you'll have to do. Uh, and you'll take staff advice on that, and, uh, and the operating costs pretty much are the operating costs. I don't think we have a extraordinary, uh, costs in terms of, 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 of operating costs. If there are areas of where we can trim, then obviously I leave that up to staff to do. And that'd be nice to, to, to do if we can without affecting service levels. But, you know, again, I would rather have it, you know, three point nine percent than four point nine, but. Um, and, and again, that's an all-in figure, so if it was three point nine, that means our budget's going up five percent. Or so in that area, and, you know, that's, that's certainly more than inflation by two or three percent. You know, I've always prided myself, and I think council in, in Whitestone to, to. You know, not, not be high on the rung when it comes to tax increases. And, and we try to separate wants and needs and those sorts of things. So again, I'm at the three point. Nine percent area. User fees, I agree on things like shore road allowances, it seems to me that. That people get to buy their shore road allowance for next to nothing, um, and we should look seriously at that. When we do look at the user fees, I would ask to have a comparator between, say, Magnetawan. And ourselves and, uh, and McKellar, so we know, you know, where we're. Where we are competitively with those, not that we have to be competitive, we can set our own, own, own user fees. Uh, in terms of landfill, I, I'm, I'm very much cautious there. I, I, I guess what comes to mind rightly or wrongly is, you know, eighty percent of our, our people or so are, are seasonal people. And many of them rightly or wrongly think that all they get is a landfill site. And, uh, uh, you'd be amazed what, what, uh, again, I guess. Staff could tell us how many of those, uh, free bush tickets were used this year. Uh, and how much we, we would have, uh, increased our revenues if we had. Charged them, whatever, whatever the fee is for, for a. A load, a trailer load of leaves and stuff, right? So I, I'm, I'm not, you know, uh, I'm not. You know, I, I'm not as jumping on, uh, uh, you know, we're not Toronto, I guess, in my mind. They also in Toronto pay for pavement and a lot of other things that, uh, that, that, uh, we don't. So I, I don't necessarily want to compare us with, with a big city in that regard, so. I, I would just, I mean, if there's some increase on, uh, at the landfill that makes sense, then obviously, but I just don't wanna. Get rid of a bunch of stuff and start charging them for, 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 for stuff. We've, we've done a good job in terms of our landfill by, I think, extending the life. And I'd be interested to see how much we've extended it by the compaction, uh, program, so. Anyway, those are all my comments. Obviously, the future grants are, are, I don't, I think. There's been a loud and clear message from council that, that grant writing needs to, to improve, I guess. And, uh, we need to do that in twenty twenty-six. Anyway, that's all my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, others. Councillor Ray?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, um. I think the, uh, the tax increase or the, whatever the levy is, I think, will have a better idea. Uh, as we see what, what, uh, all of the other levies that are coming in at. But I do think that, you know, we may have to increase it a little bit. I think that we have to be very cautious that we are not, um. Uh, making it, uh, so low that we're. We're, we're not putting in the funds that we need to, uh, say, say for the asset management. I mean, anywhere between the three point nine and the four point nine. I think four point nine would be fine with me if that's what it takes for us to be able to, uh. Manage our budget to make sure that we're not, uh, putting anything short, but if we can get it lower, that would be great too. That's about all I have to say. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Councillor Woods, did you have any?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. It, you know, the three point nine nine number and four point nine nine number that's been suggested. My, my whole thing is I wanna see this place get paid for at the standard of service that we have now. Without, you know, cutting our throats in the future. I mean, everybody knows how much more life is costing us every day in every aspect of our life. And if, if we can maintain service levels and not jack our tax rate, that's what I would like to do. But I wanna make sure we're putting the money away so that future, you know, ten, twelve years down the road from now. The people in the municipality aren't scrambling because we've, you know, taken too much out of reserves to pay for things. That we didn't wanna do a tax increase when we, we, we should be doing a reasonable tax increase. I'm not for unreasonable anything, you know. I guess kind of status quo, keep it as reasonable as possible without decreasing everyone's experience that they pay for here in Whitestone.
Okay, thank you, um. I mean, I think that, but. My, my thoughts have been pretty much already, uh, uh, already said by others, um. You know, we, we don't have a lot of wiggle room on operating costs, and we don't have a lot of fat that could be taken out of our budget, in my view. So we have to. We, we have to make sure that we're paying our bills, and, and the other, on the other hand, and, and that we're maintaining our assets, not. You know, not, uh, uh, avoiding a situation that some municipalities have got into. Other municipalities have got into where all of a sudden they, you know, they really. They really tried to avoid tax increases for a long time, and all of a sudden it came back and, and, and bit them badly. And they ended up with, you know, twenty percent tax increases in one year and that kind of thing. And I, and I wanna say, I, I've been on council since twenty fourteen, and I think this council has done. A pretty good job of, of, uh, finding that appropriate balance. And, and keeping in mind that we don't have, you know, we certainly have some rate peers who don't. Who, who are tight for funds, and we're still in times of economic uncertainty and so on, so we have to be. Respectful of that, like, there's not, 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 not everybody can just write a blank check, you know. But, uh, anyway, I, 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 I think a lot of it will. Depend on details that we don't have. That we, that we don't have at this stage of the game, so, uh, but hopefully our staff will have got out of this discussion. Will have got a, uh. Uh, you know, some. Some, some sense of. You know, kind of where the, where the balance is and what, and what would be acceptable from a. From an overall tax increase point of view. So, yeah, I'll, I'll ask this maybe at that, at this point. Are there, we've kind of gone through the items that were raised in the, in Jessica's report. Are there, uh, are there any other, um, items that? You wanna talk about? I know there was additional material here about the, about the situation with respect to the sidewalk. We've already talked about that. Uh, is there anything else we need to do about that? Are there any other? Things that we haven't talked about that you wanna cover off and?
Yeah, through, through you.
Far we adjourn.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. I think a lot, Jessica and, and Nigel, comes down to how you communicate. To our citizens also, whether it be five percent or four percent or whatever we end up as, as, as an increase. Like, I think we have to really hone in, for instance, on, in twenty twenty-four. Here's what we received in terms of, of, uh, grants and other things from the provincial government. Whether it's gravel or any of these other programs, that's La Leger on the one side in twenty twenty-four. And how much are we getting in twenty twenty-five, and is there a difference up and down? And, and also, uh, that's the revenue side, and also on the cost side, how much have, have, uh, everything? Gone up, uh, I mean, uh, maybe we've, you know, levies and things like that, because those are things that. Uh, kind of are out of our control, right? So, and if we could show that, for instance. All, all that all in is a, is a three, three percent increase. And that stuff that we control is only a two percent or whatever, then that, that goes a long way to justifying an increase, right? As opposed to just putting it out there with a pie chart and, and that sort of thing, so we have to. And we, and when we communicate, we have to communicate in a succinct manner that, that. Cause if it's a, if it's a page and a half, uh, write-up, you'll lose them after the first paragraph, so. It's very important that whatever we do this year that we properly communicate it, so, uh. And, and, and get that data, that raw data, so thank you.
And through you, Mr. Chair, councillor Nash, um, I totally agree with what, uh, councillor Lamb just said about. Making sure to get the, the information out to the public so that they know it to be transparent. When it comes to this, uh, closing comments from me, there's a few things that, that I didn't say as of yet that I'd like to touch on. Which I think will be important for our budget, but also important for the public. And, and I, I'd like staff to look into them when they come back with, with the draft budget. And those are, I think it's gonna be important that we put into our budget this year. I, I, I put twenty thousand just as a placeholder for water testing on our lakes. I know we had it two years ago or three years ago, it was never used, but I think it's gonna be an important line item to have. That we, we put a tender out for water testing of our lakes. I think it's been noted by a number of council members. Um, but that's gonna be an important thing going forward, so we can start collecting data for official plans in the future. I also think we're gonna need to put some money aside for, um, the voluntary septic. Reinspection program, and again, I put fifteen thousand dollars as a placeholder. And I did speak with North Bay Madowa, and they will do something with municipalities for voluntary septic inspections. But we need to do something like a letter of understanding with them, give them some funding for it. Um, so, you know, I think we need to look at that. Again, I'm not trying to spend more money, but I think there's some things that we need to see. Is there a way to get some of these put in to the budget this year? Um, cause I think both of those are very important. Um, overall, um, again, when it comes to our budget, it might be this year, but it affects years going forward. Um, doing more work in-house, I think, can help us, like I said earlier. But, uh, also looking at how long we tender items, be it gravel or whatever we might tender. Um, planning services, whatever it might be. Um, I know I see the gravel come back year after year after year, or maybe will it be beneficial? From a dollar point of view and staffing to do tenders at three-year terms. Or, or something like that for some of the things that are, that are each year. Um, and, um. What else do I have here? Um, looking at, as I've said before, maybe leasing vehicles instead of outright purchasing. Uh, might be a way that we can look at, at doing some things when it comes to vehicle replacements. Um, that'll cut down on maintenance. The staff will always have a, a fairly up-to-date vehicle, which, which again helps on the maintenance cost. And they'll be more fuel-efficient for the environment, things like that. Um, I just ask staff to look at that, if, if we're doing vehicles, maybe we can do some leasing. Things like that, that I think just, just thinking of it coming from a little bit different point of view. But again, those two items, lake testing and septic voluntary inspection, I think are gonna be. Um, a little bit of an item that we should, should look into, and then the final one, just in, in really closing. Is, I'm just trying to look for it here. Um, we'd spoken about the dump quite a bit today, and I know we talked about needing to do a report. On our compaction, um, that was done, and I think we're gonna have to have a placeholder there for that report. Which I think will be, I know it's not just a normal updated report, but I, I just caution staff to remember we did that. And I wanted to thank Jessica, uh, for sending out the, uh, the loan schedule. That, uh, that she sent to all of us last night upon my request. And, um, when I look at that again, I look at it and say, I think we just need to be. I'll call it careful when we take out loans, for example, Bunny Trail reconstruction that was taken out. Um, in twenty nineteen, um, we still have six years left of that and still owe. Hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars on it still, and we need to look at that before we do more work. On resurfacing again on some of these roads where, where we did stuff for. where where we did stuff for loans. And just look at with the interest rates going up. Um, we have a loan for for the backhoe that's at six percent. And maybe if we had extra surplus funds, we can pay off some of these loans or something. So I appreciate seeing that information, Jessica. I think it's important for the public to see it. I know past council was borrowing because the interest rates were low. But now we're still paying for that, which I understand interest rates were low. But with interest rates not being low now, we just need to recognize that from a loan point of view. So those are the only comments. I thank staff for giving us the opportunity to talk today. I like the fact we're doing this before Christmas. I like the fact that you're wanting our input and you'll come back with the budget, listening to everybody. I know some of the things I said today may be in it, some of the things I say today may not be. By giving us the uh the opportunity to speak on what we feel might be important, I really feel is beneficial to us all. And I really appreciate that you you guys have done that this year for us and and hope that's uh will become a new yearly thing. So thank you very much, and those are my uh my comments.
Okay, thanks. Um, who wants to go next? Councillor Ray, did you have any other comments you wanted to make?
Um, only to fall, uh, just to add on to a little bit of what councillor Nash was talking about. Two for our our different fleets. I would really encourage that we look uh with leasing, but also looking at um having a hybrid or some electric vehicles um as we need to replace them so that we're cutting down on our fuel costs. Um, I know that there's a little bit of cost to um uh put in. They're a little bit higher in price, but I think in the long run, uh, the life of the vehicle usually come out a lot uh, a lot better than a regular vehicle and the fuel costs, especially for the trucks. So if there are any, I would encourage that uh we look, we look that way as well. Um, and the only other thing that I I I'm 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 thankful, thank you again for a day like today to be able to do these discussions. And that hopefully because we've done these, it'll make our budget process go a little more quickly. And uh, and we won't uh, we won't be wasting time um going over things again. We'll be able to move on with what you've already got from everyone today. And thanks a lot for this this meeting. Thanks.
Councillor Woods, any final remarks?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'll keep it short. Thanks for the meeting. I appreciate this meeting having, because we've never done it like this before. I think this is a good step forward for a regular practice for the municipality. I wish staff the best of luck, and I hope all of our comments can be reflected in the updates that we receive at the next budget meetings.
Okay, great. So um, if there's nothing further, can we uh, can we wrap this up? Are you ready to for a motion to reconvene to a regular meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, councillor Lamb.
I can second the motion, councillor Nash.
Right, councillor Nash, that the council of the municipality Whitestone reconvenes into a regular meeting at eleven fifty six A M. All those in, all those in favor?
Councillor Nash, yes.
Councillor Woods, yes.
Okay, thank you. It's carried. Sorry, I just lost my screen here for some reason. Know why that is, but.
We can still see you.
Well, you know what? I guess I won't worry about it then. Oh, there it is.
You look like you got a nice new haircut.
What's that?
You look like you got a nice new haircut.
Uh, well, I, that's actually correct. I did.
There you go. You're all ready for Christmas.
Well, I think so, yeah. I don't, I don't think I'll get the next one till till the new year. All right, so um matters arising from committee of the whole. I've moved for in second there that the council of the municipality Whitestone hereby receives report F I N dash twenty twenty five dash fourteen, pre-budget discussion for information purposes. You get a mover in second there?
I'll move.
I can, I can second councillor Nash.
Councillor Ray, councillor Nash seconds. All those in favor?
Councillor Nash, yes.
Councillor Woods, yes.
Okay, thank you, and uh, thanks to Jessica and the rest of staff for all their work and and providing that report. I have a similar motion for five point one two, which was the information about the proposed Dunchurch highways, Dunchurch Highway Sidewalk Extension, that the council of the municipality Whitestone hereby receives for information report admin dash twenty twenty five dash twenty twenty two, which was the sidewalk project update. Move her in second there?
I'll move it.
Thank you, councillor Lamb, seconded by.
I'll second.
Councillor Woods. Thank you. All those in favor?
Councillor Woods, yes.
Councillor Nash, yes.
Okay, thank you. Confermentary by law, mover in second there, please.
I can move councillor Nash.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Councillor Lamb?
Yeah, yep.
Okay. Once again, every time I hit my mouse, zoom screen disappears. I had to keep my hand away. Okay, I, all those in favor?
Councillor Woods, yes.
Councillor Nash, yes.
Thank you. That is carried. And let that further ado, item seventeen, adjournment, and I'll therefore be it resolved at this meeting.
I've got something to ask under councillor items, so under thirteen.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't think we had a any of those things in our agenda, but uh.
Oh, well, it's in the motions. That's all I see. I'm I'm looking at the motions, but.
The motions? Oh. So it's got four items, none. But look, if you haven't.
Yeah, I know. I just want to say every everything's ready for Saturday night, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, and what are we giving them this year? What are we giving the volunteers this year?
If we tell you, wouldn't that take away the surprise?
Yeah, but I want to know. Good answer. My wife's in the background said, good answer.
We are giving them uh cooler bags that that fit, I think, like sixteen or twenty four um sodas.
Oh, that's good. And it's got the logo on it.
Correct, yes.
People love something with the logo on it, so that's great.
Good, yep. Yep, and and planning is coming right along. I think we're feeling on top of things.
Okay, good, 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 good.
Thank you.
I think, uh, George, when you make your presentations, uh, whether it's, I guess, Joe McEwan's coming, I take it, eh?
Yes.
Oh, good. When you make that presentation.
Maybe he is, as of the last time I spoke to him, yes.
Good. When you make that presentation, maybe you could have all of council come up while you make your remarks. Because it's a, it's.
Yeah, I think that I think that is on the, I think that's on the script that we have. We have, we we have the two um, well, we have, we have.
Service awards.
We have three, we have three presentations at the beginning before dinner. The first one is is um, just to, I I again recognizing Carol Gory as senior of the year. And then and then and then Joe, and Joe will 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 come and probably say, I'm as, I I anticipate that he will, he will respond. But yeah, we, I.
Carol won't be there.
Oh, she won't.
Not that I, she can't make the library board meeting because of she's not going to the dinner council, so, but anyway.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, I I heard that, but um, uh, oh, well, okay, then we we can certainly do that. There are also three uh lo- long service presentations to fire department people so that will come after that. And they, I don't believe that they'll respond to them probably, but uh that, so council can come up come up for that. I think that, and I think that was actually in the script.
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, so.
Yeah. Well, I was just saying.
And then what we do. After dinner, you'll be up again, does.
Yeah, that's fine. Good, thank you. That's all I have under councillor items, so.
Okay, is there anything else before we adjourn? All right, then I need a mover in second there to adjourn.
I'll move.
Councillor Ray, seconded by.
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Woods, and it's twelve oh three P M.
Have a good evening, everybody, or good afternoon.
Favor.
Yeah.
Councillor Nash, yes.
Your day.
Yeah, everyone.
Woods, yes.
Okay.
Have a great day.